All right. Thank you, Brian, and welcome, everyone, to this March 14, 2022, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We're going to start tonight. We have Greg Cook, who is a candidate for Alabama Supreme Court. And, Mr. Cook, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself and tell us anything that you want to tell us about your campaign.
I really appreciate the opportunity, y'all. My name is Greg Cook, and I'm running for the Alabama Supreme Court, and I'm running because I believe in public service, y'all. I have spent many years volunteering for the Boy Scouts because I believe in public service. I've been a volunteer since 1987 for the Boy Scouts. I'm one of the vice presidents on the Greater Alabama Boy Scout Council. Both of my sons are Eagle Scouts, so I've hiked hundreds of miles with the Scouts because I believe in public service. We attend Dawson Baptist here in Homewood. We taught U-SUNY School since 1994. I'm a deacon there, and we believe in public service. I spent four years in the United States Air Force because I believe in public service. And now I'm running for the Alabama Supreme Court because I believe in public service. I have spent 30 years at the same law firm. I've handled small cases like small claims things, car crash cases, insurance fights, and I've handled really big things. I've handled class actions, cases across the country in 15 different states. I've had cases in 40 of our 67 counties. I'm on the Rules Committee for the Alabama Supreme Court. They've pointed me to that, and I have 41 reported appeal opinions in Alabama and in the federal courts. I have authored a 2,000-page treatise on the Alabama Rules Procedure. Needless to say, it will put you to sleep, but it sells lots and lots of copies. So I am ready for this job. I attended Harvard Law School, thanks to the United States Air Force, and graduated there with Neil Gorsuch, President Trump's first appointment to the court. So appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and I would ask you to remember three things about me when I sit down. The first is that I'm boring and predictable, which means that you get the rule of law from me. I shouldn't have an opinion about what the best thing is from a decision. I should be applying the law and the Constitution that the representatives in the state of Alabama passed, not my own agenda. Second, if you care about election law, I've spent 30 years as a volunteer for the Republican Party dealing with election issues. I have been their attorney for the last five years, almost five years. And then, lastly, I am qualified for this job. I'll just tell you, I'm just basically a nerd, y'all, and that's a good thing. You want somebody on that court that's going to get the answer right. And this seat is now presently filled by Justice Mike Boland, who's another resident of Birmingham, another metro Birmingham resident, and a fantastic gentleman who has done a wonderful job on the court, and he is retiring. So I hope I can fill his big shoes. Lastly, I should tell you, my beautiful wife would be here tonight, but she's on the city council in Vestavia, and they have their meetings on Monday night as well. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it. All right, so with that, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And I believe Ms. Smith, are you doing the invocation?
I...
Okay, so if everyone will please stand for...
Ms. Smith doing the invocation, followed by the pledge.
In honor of this week being St. Patrick's Day, I have... My invocation is actually a traditional Irish blessing, followed by a little bit of St. Patrick's Prayer, St. Patrick's Prayer, if any of you are Catholic. It's very long, so I've put out a portion of it to put with my Irish blessing. So if you'll pray with me. "May the road rise up to meet you; may the wind be always at your back; may the sun shine warm upon your face; the rains fall soft upon your fields; and until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of His hand. Christ is in the heart of every man who thinks of Me; Christ is in the mouth of everyone who speaks of Me; Christ in every eye that sees Me; Christ in every ear that hears Me. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen."
Amen.
Everyone will face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Salter, if you will please call and roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltony?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon? Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Nels?
Here.
Counselor Andres?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
President Wyatt?
Here.
You got two absent, but you have a court.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our meeting of February 28, 2022. Those have previously been distributed by Ms. Salter. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of such minutes and approval of the same.
Motion.
Second, motion by Mr. Wolverton, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Any opposed? And that is nine to zero. All right, next, we have some board vacancies that we need to open. The first is Award One Part Board opening. Our incumbent has filled an unexpired term, so he is eligible for two more terms, as I understand it. But we also need to just open it probably for... How long do y'all want? Two weeks? Does that work?
Two weeks is good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then, we will leave that open until 4:30 on March 28. Okay? All right. And then, we also have a few spots on the beautification board. And, Mr. Sims, just make sure I haven't got these right. We've got Award One, Award Two, Award Three, and an at-large.
That is correct.
Okay. Do you want two weeks for that as well?
I'd like longer, actually, if it's okay. If we could do a month, that's great, because thinking about the beautification board having a cleanup on April 9, maybe it'd be a good opportunity to maybe, you know, have an event and possibly recruit or encourage and help spread the word in conjunction with that.
It looks like we'll have a meeting on April 11.
That's great.
Okay, so we'll do to 4:30 on April 11 for those four spots.
Yes, sir.
All right. We don't have any additions to the agenda tonight, but we do have one slight amendment. Ms. Smith, do you want to make the motion about this?
Sure. Item number 040222, which is on the consent agenda, came out of special issues from last week. The motion was actually to refer it to the beautification board and not for it to be dropped, so I would just like to make a motion to remove that item from the consent agenda and refer it to beautification board, please.
So we'll move that item from the consent agenda to the old business agenda and handle it there. All right, so with that amendment, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the same.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Waltony, second by Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that's nine to zero. The amended agenda is approved. All right, which brings us to the rest of the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gier, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also nine to zero. All right, which brings us to our old business agenda, the first item, 050222, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 601 Oakmore Drive, brought to us by Jeff and Emily Evans and Wyatt Pugh of our inspections and Permits Department. And we'll start with a report from special issues.
Yes, so in the interim time between when this item was originally asked to be added to the agenda, the homeowners asked for it to be dropped, but the public hearing had already been set. So the motion out of committee was to drop this item five to zero, but then we realized that we could not do that because it's already set for public hearing. So we actually sent it out without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight, which we would like to have that dropped, please.
Fantastic. Let's go ahead and get the public hearing part out of the way. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, see if there's, in the unlikely event, there is someone here to speak for or against this item. And if not, then I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to drop.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nels, second by Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is dropped, nine to zero. All right, next item, 060222, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of an ordinance to adopt the 2021 Building Code, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh of our inspections and Permits Department, and the planning and development... So did this come from special issues or from planning and development?
This came from PND.
PND, okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, just making sure I had it right. All right, so we'll have a report from PND, Ms. Andres.
Yes, the committee met last week, and we voted five to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Wolverton and seconded by Counselor Nels.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we will open this public hearing. And, Mr. Pugh, if you want to come up... And let me just ask, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Okay, Mr. Pugh, if you'll just give us a brief rundown.
Absolutely. It's been seven years since we adopted our last round of building codes. It's time to do that again. So this is a proposal to move to the 2021 code cycle.
All right, thank you very much. And just one more time, is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council. Mr. Harden?
Sure. Mr. Pugh?
Yes, sir.
Always, when we make these changes, it affects people and costs and all that. What do you think is the two or three things that are different for us with this new code that is going to change, that's going to affect the owners of property, houses and commercial buildings?
Okay, well, on the residential side, which it sounds like you're sort of leaning to more than anything...
Anyway...
There's really nothing that's going to be a huge, you know, just a cost shock to anyone. There are some tighter restrictions on things like ventilation for gas-fired appliances. It's been sort of common practice to use PVC plastic. With this new code, you can't just use any old PVC plastic to vent a gas furnace any longer. You have to use a specially formulated, which, at the moment, can be a little bit pricey due to supply chain issues. So that's been one thing that I think builders have, you know, been a little concerned about. However, we have been able to get through that. I don't see that being a huge thing. Really, as I said, there's really nothing that's going to be a huge cost shock. There are really some more detailed criteria in the code, dealing with things like residential deck building. The code's always been sort of glossed over that. They've outlined an entire section on that now, so it's going to be hard to get away with building a cheap deck.
What about on the commercial side?
On the commercial side, there are some electrical... On the electrical code part, there are some upgrades, which I guess the easiest way to say it is the codes are outpacing the manufacturing industry right now. So the codes are requiring a little bit tighter restrictions than manufacturers are able to sort of keep up with at the moment. It's a little bit more of a supply chain issue than anything, which may add to some cost. But again, these are things that'll work themselves out. I don't foresee this being a deal breaker for anybody. It's not going to stop anyone from wanting to build in Homewood.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not, Mr. Kendrick, will you give us the first reading?
I'll give you a brief...
Even better.
These are standard building codes adopted pursuant to Section 11, 45A, the code of Alabama. Section 1, the 2020 edition of the National Electrical Code slash NDFPA, Section 70, and the 2021 International Power Code, which is B through M, is compiled by the International Code Council. Section 2, the 2021 edition of the International Building Code, the 2021 edition of the International Mechanical Code, 2021 edition of the International Fuel Code, the 2021 International Existing Building Code, the 2021 edition of International Property Maintenance Code, all compiled by the International Code Congress, with certain modifications are adopted. Section 3, the section that the 2021 edition of the International Plumbing Code, and with certain modifications, and 2021 Alabama Residential Energy Code, with Section 802.2 amended. Section 4, the 2021 edition of the International Residential Code, and Section R313 is deleted relating to the entirety of automatic fire sprinkler systems for single-family dwellings and townhomes. Section 5, the energy-efficient building envelope and installation of energy-efficient mechanical lighting and power system in residential structures is adopted by reference of the 2015 Residential Energy Code. Section 6, for purpose of regulating energy-efficient building envelopes and installation of energy-efficient mechanical lighting and power in commercial structures, the council adopts by reference to 2015 Alabama Commercial Energy Code. Section 7, adoption of the National Code, National Code and 2015 Residential Commerce Energy Codes are adopted by reference. Section 8, all these ordinances are adopted by reference as permitted by law. Section 9, the council has adopted this ordinance, it has amended certain terms and modified as set out herein. Section 10, that the codes adopted in are adopted by reference relating to the duties of officials of the city whose duties correspond with those of named officials in the codes. Section 11, violation of provisions, the ordinance should be punished as provided by Section 11, I say, the code of ordinances. Section 12, that the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, as presently constituted, will remain in full force and effect relating to the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Section 13, even part of provision ordered to be unconstitutional or in by court of conference jurisdiction, such only shall not affect any of the parts of provisions unaffected by section 14, meaning that all ordinances or parts of orders contrary to provisions are repealed. And Section 15, that the provision ordered shall become effective upon its adoption by the city council, through or by the mayor, otherwise becoming law.
Thank you very much.
I would make a motion for unanimous consent.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andres, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Waltony?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes, ma'am.
President Wyatt?
Yes.
All right, so that is nine to zero, and now I would...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion again by Ms. Smith, and a second again by Ms. Andres, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Waltony?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
That's 2828.
All right, so that is nine to zero, and ordinance 2828.
And the next one, please, is supposed to be PND. That's what I told you.
No problem. Thank you. All right, next item, 070222, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of ordinance to adjust the building permits and fees, again, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh, and a report from planning and development. Ms. Andres.
Yes, the committee met last week and voted five to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Wolverton and seconded by Counselor Waltony.
All right, thank you. And so with that, I will open this public hearing. And first, I'll see if there's anyone besides Mr. Pugh that wants to speak for or against this item. Looks like you're it. Mr. Pugh, if you'd give us just a brief rundown of this one as well.
Yes, sir. This particular ordinance would repeal the one that was passed at the same time the building codes were updated in 2016. It's time for us to sort of bump up our fees a little bit and to come in line with surrounding municipalities. We're lagging behind a little bit in fees. The main thing this would do is adjust the minimum building permit fee from $50 to $100. And with costs being what they are now, I mean, that's not going to be a big impact on anyone. It adds a reinspection fee of $75. It was $50. It adds a couple of fees, such as a replacement permit card fee of $50. The main thing that is added that was not in the previous ordinance is a plan review fee schedule, and it's on... Let's see here. Section 1B. I think I went past it. Well, anyway, you can see that it's sort of a progressive fee schedule when it gets to commercial, based on dollar value, contract value. For residential, it's pretty basic. It's pretty straightforward. This is something that I... This is an idea that I actually borrowed straight out of a neighboring municipality's ordinance. So we're not... It's not going to be anything shocking for anyone, and I think it's going to be... I think it's going to... I think it's going to be a big plus, actually, for us, for the way our department works.
All right. Unless there's anyone that would like to speak to it, I will close the public hearing, ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Kendrick.
There's a blank space in here about when these were taken back?
That's one of my questions.
Yeah, I was actually thinking that the first of the month, the first of next month...
I would suggest you publish it, then four, 30 days, give everyone notice.
Yeah. Perfect. People are in between stuff.
Should I have it made first?
I was trying to say, should we just pick May 1st?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Ideal.
Yeah, and give notice to people so they know it's coming.
All right.
All right, with that, I would make a motion for unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, motion for Ms. Smith, second for Ms. Andres.
Do you have to have a fresh reading?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. 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 Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us the first reading.
I'll try to summarize again. It's an ordinance setting forth the schedule of building permit fees, mechanical permit fees, electrical permit fees, plumbing permit fees, gas permit fees, and construction industry craft training fees, as required by Act Number 2015, 308 of the legislature. The order names as follows. Section 1 deals with the increase in the building permit fees. Building permit fees will be determined at a rate of $9.50 per thousand with a minimum of $100. B deals with the planned permit review fees for residential and non-residential. Section 2 deals with the mechanical building permit fees, again, based on the rate of $9.50 per thousand with a minimum of $100. Electrical permit fees, based on the same determination. Section 4 deals with plumbing permit fees. Section 5 deals with irrigation permit fees. Section 10 deals with gas permit fees. Section 7 deals with all other fees, reinspection fees, address corrections, replacement permit cards, related billing fees. Section 8 deals with weekend or after-hours inspection fees. Section 9 deals with how the... When the fees are paid and how they're paid. Section 10 deals with unused permit refunds. Section 11 deals with double permit fees based on failure to obtain a permit originally. Section 12 deals with action on the application for a permit fee. Section 13 deals with the conditions of the permit. Section 14 deals with the construction industry craft training program permit fees. Section 15 deals with issuance of citation to owners of property or each person, firm, or corporation engaged in activities relegated by this ordinance, whose activities are in violation of this ordinance. Section 16 deals if any other parts or provisions voided, contrary to these provisions, are specifically repealed. Section 17, if any part of provision is held to be unconstitutional and invalid, although the parts not thereby affected, shall remain in full force and effect. Section 18 deals that the fees will become effective on May 1, 2021.
You mean 2022?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Have the first reading now, would you?
Yes, my motion stands.
I still second.
All right, motion for Ms. Smith, second for Ms. Andres, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Waltony?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes.
All right, so now I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Or second.
Motion by Mr. Waltony, second by Ms. Smith, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltony?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes.
So that is nine to zero, and we have ordinance 2829. All right, next item, 220122, request for consideration of Forest Brook Traffic Calming Project on Forest Brook Drive from Forest Brook Circle to West Oxmoor Road via Shades Glen Drive and Delcris Drive, brought to us by Counselors Alamon and Wolverton. This, as I understand it, was sent out some time ago, and is now... We just need to discuss what the final plan is?
Yeah, so Cale has some drawings of chicanes. It's going to be very similar to the South Forest item from a few weeks ago. Brian, do you have those?
So the first slide is just an example of what temporary chicanes can look like. So we're just looking at wattles and cones and things. So not a whole lot of investment upfront. We just want to make sure that they work like we intend for them to.
Okay.
The striping doesn't seem to be showing up on this one, Brian, but this is about the loca... None of them do. So these are about the locations. I think, right now, we propose three locations. One on Forest Brook Drive, closest to Shades Glen Drive. The other one...
On Delcris?
On Shades Glen Drive, between Shades Glen Circle and Hillbrook Drive, and then the other one on Delcris, closest to Belmont Drive.
Okay. All right.
And with the other item, we essentially left it up to Cale and the department to...
Yeah, and I would agree. Just leave it to their discretion.
And so, just to summarize, it'll allow us to put something out there temporarily, re-study it, see what the effects are with kind of minimal impact and cost and investment upfront, just as a good starting point.
Okay.
Based on the previous traffic studies.
So is that a motion?
Yes, I would... Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Wolverton?
Second.
Take him by Ms. Nels.
I don't have a resolution because you didn't send it.
Yeah, and we'll get Mr. Kendrick a resolution.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
I mean, is it going to look like that, or are we putting the stuff...
It's not going to be striping like that.
It's going to look like the temporary.
Right, it's going to look like the first slide. It's going to look more like that.
And so I assume we're expecting that when we're all done there, that those... All those things will be gone, some will take them, whatever. I mean, is that the expectation? If it's not, you better think about it.
Right.
We probably won't put a lot of potted plants out there.
That would not be the end outcome, is my understanding. There would be something more permanent that would be constructed if it is deemed effective.
Right, okay.
That's right.
I'm not dissing your neighborhood, I'm just saying, you know, you put that out I'm not, I'm not dissing your neighborhood, I'm just saying, you know, you put that out there, kids come by, oh, let's go put that over in someone's yard, you know.
I guess, I guess South Forest will be the, the guinea pig then, because that's going to be a few years ahead of this one.
It's all right, yeah, they're going there first. It gets a, a great start.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero.
It'll be twenty-two thirty-nine.
And will be resolution twenty-two thirty-nine. All right. Next item, fifteen oh two, twenty-two, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a secondary front yard fence variance at two twelve Broadway Street. Brought to us by David Kenman, the owner and Wyatt Pugh of our inspections and Permits Department. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Um, yes, committee met last week, invited five to zero to recommend referring this item back out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. Uh, the motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Counselor Sims. And Mr., we heard from Mr. Kenman, and he explained the whole thing to us.
All right, so with that, I will open the public hearing. I see Mr. Kenman's already up to the podium.
Yeah.
So if you'll just give us a brief summary of what you're looking for.
Sure. Um, good evening. I'm David Kenman. I live at two twelve Broadway, which is right up on the corner of Broadway and College Avenue, right next to Edgewood Elementary. Uh, we are asking for a variance due to the setback. We're within the fifteen-foot setback requirements, and it's around eight point nine feet, I believe, is, is where it is. Um, we are merely trying to replace the, that's a really good picture, actually. Um, we're, we're merely trying to, uh, replace a fence that should have been replaced a couple of years ago, in, in all honesty. And it's actually due to the recent rain. You know, we've had a couple more spindles fall off and that kind of thing. Um, one point of clarification from last week's discussion, Ms. Smith, you asked me the height.
Yes.
I checked with my contractor after the meeting. I think I said five feet in the meeting.
Yeah, I think that's right.
It's actually, at the highest point at the spindles, it's with the caps, we have some decorative caps going on. It's six feet, three inches, which is exactly what we have now.
Okay, but it, it kind of, it varies, right?
Yeah.
It's up and down.
There was a, there was a picture of the proposed rendering, and it's, it's going to be a little less pitched than, than it is currently.
Gotcha, yeah.
But it's still going to be that way.
Okay.
Um, and so it's well below the eight feet.
Yeah.
But I did want to clarify that after last week's discussions, because I, I was wrong about that. But, and the caps are going to be a little, if you look at the rendering, the caps aren't going to be pointed. They're going to be kind of the flat, square things. Um, but that six-three is with the cap. Everything else is no greater than six feet with, you know, lower in the middle. It's a decorative fence. I mean, it's not, it's not really a privacy fence in any respect. It kind of isolates us from college and all the foot traffic and carpool and that kind of thing. So it's merely trying to replace what's already there.
All right, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Nothing, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from council?
I do not have any other questions, but I would move to approve.
All right, so we have a motion for Ms. Smith, and a second for Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
That was Ms. Nelms.
Aye. I'm sorry, Ms. Nelms, I apologize. All right, motion for Ms. Smith, second for Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero, and will be resolution twenty-one, twenty-two forty. All right, next item, oh two, oh one, oh two, twenty-two, request to authorize mayor to sign fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two BJCTA contract and pay first two quarters. Brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. Um, my understanding is that we don't have the correct contract yet.
Oh.
So I know they came and, and delivered information, but we don't actually have this correct contract yet. Because the director is changed, so the name has not been corrected nor the signature, so I'm going to-
We reached out several times.
Yeah, and we've reached out to them.
Well, we mentioned it to them in the meeting.
Yeah, so I'm going to carry this item over without objection, and we'll deal with it next time around and see if they give us the contract.
I don't think they want our money.
We'll see. We'll see how bad. All right, next item, fourteen oh two, twenty-two, request for consideration to surplus miscellaneous items no longer needed for general municipal purposes. Brought to us by Chief Hill of the Fire Department and Gordon James, our police superintendent. And we will start with a report from Finance. Ms. Smith, there you go in that time.
That is correct, yes. Committee met last week, voted three to zero to recommend approving the items to be surplused. Motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by myself. And, I don't know why I says that. Yes, that's it, five, three to zero coming out of Finance.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Kendrick, will you give us the first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an order to declare certain property as surplus. To by established and declared, the following described personal property described in Exhibit Eight is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes and therefore declared to be surplus property. Section two, the mayor and the city clerk are authorized and directed to dispose of the property by option of the highest bidder.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, any questions or comments from the council? If not, I entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second from, by Ms. Nelms, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
By Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Al, Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nelms?
Yes.
Councilor Andrus?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtney, another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nelms?
Yes.
Councilor Andrus?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes, all right, so that's nine to zero, and we ordnance twenty-eight thirty. Next item, twelve oh two, twenty-two, request for consideration to work in the right of way to remove and replace a panel of the public sidewalk at twenty-eight oh eight Eighteenth Street South. Brought to us by Circle Lighting and Wyatt Pugh. And we will start with a report from Public Works. Mr. Wolverton?
So, we met last week, and the committee voted five to zero to recommend approval with the proper indemnification agreement. Uh, the motion was made by Councilor Gier and seconded by Councilor Harden. And we did just have a clarification, because we were questioning whether or not a whole section of sidewalk would be replaced. And it sounded as though, um, that would be suggested and discussed with, with the contractor.
All right. Okay, and we have the contractor here. Mr. Wolverton, what exactly was the question?
So, so if I remember correctly, uh, Mr. Pugh had, had suggested that when the sidewalk is replaced, that it is replaced as a whole, in its entirety as a whole segment, rather than, so it would extend beyond where they're actually needing to tear it up.
In other words, the segment is bigger than the space that they need to repair.
To actually work on, yes.
Would you be willing to proffer that you'll replace the entire segment?
Yes, it looks like we're probably not going to actually get into the city sidewalk. There's an apron, there's two columns on either side of the building. That apron, I just laid it out the other day, and then I can cut that apron only, but I'll still replace the, uh, the, where those pots are, basically. It's a section between the two columns of the building, so we don't even get into the city property. But if we would, we have no problem. Any, um, anything that we touch will replace the whole slab. Not an issue.
So any, any slab you touch, you'll replace the whole slab?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you, could you sign and proceed, your next, who the record?
Kevin G.I.U.N.T.A.
Who was it going to be?
Uh, Rectenwald, R.E.C.T.E.N.W.A.L.D. Brothers.
And there's a sign and sheet right there, if you'll just put it on there as well.
And it did sound as though Mr. Pugh would be able to kind of monitor the progress and ensure that that is followed before any CO or anything would be issued too.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council?
I was just going to comment that I think the other question we had at the time, which is now irrelevant, was about whether or not it actually go all the way to those pavers and how those would be replaced. But it sounds like that's now not a concern.
No, we're not going to get to the pavers at all.
So again, if, if that, you know, should the scope change, then if Mr. Pugh would administer, you know, whatever in, in implementation sense.
Okay, all right, so any other questions or comments? So, given that that proffer has been made, a little bit different from what came out of committee. I think we probably ought to go ahead and make a motion and a second with that proffer in place, so if someone would be willing to do that.
So, yeah, motion to approve with the proper indemnification agreement and, um, and I don't know how to say it, but restoring the entirety of any slab that's-
You touch one slab, you replace it?
Yep, the entire slab.
Second.
And a second from Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also nine to zero, and will be, what, twenty-
Forty-one.
Two forty-one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Um, all right, last item on the old business agenda, oh four oh two, twenty-two. Uh, request for consideration for Christmas tree project, and we will start with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Okay, this is going to be from memory, because that's not on my agenda. I believe Ms. Andrus made a motion to refer this item to the Beautification Board so that they could work on the project, and from hearing from Nick, they met today and, and actually have already started discussing that. Um, and I don't know who seconded it, but I'm going to say Mr. Sims. Oh, it's Mr. Alamon, there we go, okay. I'm glad you have a better memory than I do. It's too long ago. Okay, um, so, and that was, five of us were there, so I'm going to say five to zero, that that was our recommendation.
All right, and this doesn't require a resolution, but we will go ahead and vote on it, and we have a motion from the committee. So any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero, and that will go to the Beautification Board. All right, uh, next we have our committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of that agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, which brings us to Other New Business, oh seven oh three, twenty-two, request to set a public hearing for consideration of declaring the property located at one oh two Green Springs Highway a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinance ten ninety-eight litter on private property. Brought to us by Scott Cook, our code enforcement, uh, official in the inspections Department. Uh, Mr. Kendrick, how long do we need for that?
Fourteen days.
Four, okay.
You're going to have to do it first meeting.
Okay, so then we'll, we'll do that, uh, we'll set that for April eleventh, I think was what we said that first meeting's going to be? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so we'll set that for April eleventh. All right, next item, oh eight oh three, twenty-two, request for, to set a public hearing for consideration of a sign variance at one fifty-nine State Farm Parkway. Brought to us by Ginger Hickey of Pro Signs, Taco Bell, and Wyatt Pugh of our Building Department. That public hearing is going to be set for our next meeting on March twenty-eighth, uh, twenty twenty-two at six P.M. Oh nine oh three, twenty-two, request to set a public hearing for consideration to rezone thirty-four fifty Manor Drive from R five to R si-, R five attached dwelling unit district to R six attached unit, attached dwelling unit district. The applicant is LMS Brookwood Property LP. Has a means to correct and mitigate the current legal non-conforming status of the property based on the number of units on the site and other development criteria to a more appropriate and higher density zoning classification in conjunction with a required companion development plan. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of five to zero to one with three absent and favor, uh, with a favorable recommendation of the rezone. That item will be set for a public hearing on, uh, or meeting on April eleventh, twenty twenty-two at six P.M. Next item, oh one oh three, twenty-two, request for consideration for sponsorship of Vulcans on parade for placement of a Vulcan reproduction statue, brought to us by Counselor Smith. Uh, this item was discussed in Finance. Uh, there was a time consideration, which is why we have added it to Other New Business, but Finance Committee did discuss it. Ms. Smith, you want to give us just a brief rundown?
I believe Brian has an image of the current, the Vulcan statue that is on the campus of Birmingham Southern, I think, if he could put that up.
I do, sorry, hang on just a second.
That's okay. Um, so this is a project being done by the Junior Board for the Vulcan Monument and Park, a park and museum. And it is kind of in conjunction with the World Games. They are putting these miniature, I think they're about four and a half to five feet tall fiberglass Vulcan statues at different locations around the city. And a board member who lives in Homewood came to see if Homewood be, would be interested in sponsoring a Vulcan. We discussed it in Park Board, so we would, we had talked about it in Finance, and we would like to do it. We think it'd be a great thing to kind of bring attention to the city and participate in this. Um, and we actually have a Park Board member who has a business in Homewood, who is actually going to sponsor one for Central Park. And then we are being requested to sponsor one that would be placed in Patriot Park in West Homewood. Just as a little bit of information, there's currently ones at Birmingham Southern, Railroad Park, Inside the BJCC, Connect Communications, Magic City Dentistry, Oak Mountain Elementary School, Redmont Distilling, Maynard, Cupard, and Gale, several locations around the city. The statues are fiberglass, and the cost is five thousand dollars per statue to sponsor one. Um, and that includes the statue itself, the freight, the placing, there's a plaque that tells who is sponsoring it. And then there's also the artist fees, because they do have a, a stable of artists who are going to be actually doing the statues. They are going to be placed for about a six-month timeframe, a little, could be a little more, could be a little less. Um, and it takes about a month, once we decide to do this, to get the statue actually casted and done. So that's why we wanted to go ahead and get it done, so we would have it here before the World Games actually started. We can choose our artist and work with them on what we would like the statues to look like. And I think that's about all the good information that I have, but it is a cost of five thousand dollars, and we would take that out of our advertising line item.
Well, I have a question. Um, so the, that one at BSC lives right outside my office, but he lives there, like, forever. Can we keep them?
I, I, that is not the current thing, and I don't think that's what the, the host agreement says.
And like the one at Railroad Parks was there forever.
Uh, yeah, and I, I don't know if they were done, like, early on, and there was some sort of arrangement that that was going to be the case. That is not what the agreement says. I guess we could certainly talk to them about that.
So we're just renting it of sorts?
Uh, kind of, I mean, it's basically, yes, a temporary kind of promotion in conjunction with the World Games. Um, and I don't know, we'd have to talk to Mr. Squires also, because he may not want a permanent statue in both of the parks.
Mr. Squires, he would say if he doesn't have to prepare it, a fair amount of work on it.
Exactly. Yeah, so I think that would be, uh, that would be something that we would have to discuss. But the current, the, what is set up, it says, or, um, statues will be taken from, yeah, that it, they should be up there for about six months, maybe a little bit later.
This actually says it'll be the end of two-year period.
Oh, well, there you go, two years.
Okay.
So maybe in two years, they're going to come snatch the one back from Birmingham Southern.
Yeah, we'll work on, we'll be working on.
Okay, so in two years, you know.
They'll forget about it.
They'll just forget all about us, and leave it sitting right there. Um, so that's it. So it's five thousand dollars coming out of the, um, advertising line item.
All right, is that a motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'll second that, I love it.
Motion from Ms. Smith, second from Ms. Andrus. Any other questions or comments? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also nine to zero, and be twenty-two, resolution twenty-two forty-two. All right, next item, eleven oh three, twenty-two, request for resolution fixing the cost which it finds were reasonable incurred in the demolition of structures at three oh seven Westlandwood Drive and assessing the same against the property. Brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. This is just so we can actually assert the lien on work that the city did on that property. The work's already been done. So it's just a, just a formal process of going and assessing the lien to the property.
I would make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harden. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero, and be resolution twenty-two forty-three. Next item, twelve oh three, twenty-two, request for consideration of an ABC one forty special event retail license for interior elements LLC DBA Crawfish Boil Benefit for Restoration Academy located in the parking lot of twenty-eight twenty-one Central Avenue, Suite one oh nine. Brought to us by Melody Salter and Robert Brigette. Mr. Gualtney, my understanding is because this is a special events license, it doesn't need approval from fire or police?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on this then. Uh, I would entertain a motion for having no objection.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Nelms. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes nine to zero. Last item, thirteen oh three, twenty-two, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of March one, twenty twenty-two through March fourteen, twenty twenty-two. Brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. Um, and my understanding is in Mr. Alamon's absence, Mr. Harden put in the extra?
I thought, I thought Mr. Gualtney did it.
Or did Mr. Gualtney do it?
No, I did.
I thought Mr. Harden was doing it.
I saw the emails, I, I didn't know who landed on it.
I didn't read except the first one, and I didn't look at the thread, and then I later looked at the thread, and I thought, well, I'll call Mr. Gualtney and figure it out, and then I did. Um, so I did go over there and went through them, and I had some questions, and, uh, Ms. Salter answered my questions. And so I, I make a motion to approve the vouchers.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Harden, second from Ms. Smith. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero, and will be twenty-two forty-four. All right, which brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, guys. Um, I just, I actually have quite a few little things to touch on. It's been a busy couple of weeks. Uh, first of all, Taste of Homewood, uh, last week was absolutely phenomenal. Uh, we had such a great time bringing that event outdoors, um, instead of inside was a major plus. Um, I think, uh, you know, Meredith and, and the entire Chamber of Commerce did a fantastic job. Um, there were a lot, a lot of people out there, and I think they all, all had a good time. Uh, want to say congratulations to the show choir from the high school. Uh, they were in Chicago this past week. The ladies group Nexus, uh, finished as grand champions, and the network, uh, finished in the top three finalists, which is still very impressive, uh, from our little show choir here in Homewood, to go all the way up to Chicago and do that. So congratulations to them. Um, very beautiful prayer tonight. Saint Patrick's Day's always been something that I've held close to my heart, because my family celebrated that kind of like a birthday for me. So it's, uh, that, that prayer's always been a part of my mind, so you did a great job with that. Chili Cook Off was great last weekend, for those of you, I, I know there were some of you that were judges with me as well, and, uh, had a great time there. It's, it's really great to see people out, out and about again when it's springtime, and, uh, and for all these events that need people there to really appreciate what's going on, um, in, in our community. So certainly proud to, to have that. to really appreciate what's going on in our, in our community. So, certainly proud to have that held, excuse me. March twenty-fourth, I sent an email out to everybody last week. March twenty-fourth is the Exceptional Foundation Basketball Game. There are several of you that have not participated in this yet, and it is the best thing you will ever do. I promise you, it is a fantastic time. If you have not gotten your shirt sizes and numbers to Berkeley, please do that ASAP, and you have absolutely no say-so in what your nickname is on the back of your shirt. So whatever it says, you just have to deal with it. So hopefully you've been nice to Berkeley over the past year. Because if not, it could be real, it could be real nasty. So, we're also, Counselor Andrus and I have been in conversation with Mountain Brook on a sign that will be welcoming visitors for the World Games into both Mountain Brook and Homewood right there on the two, two-eighty Highway thirty-one corridor. So we're excited about that. There's more information to come. Last couple of things, ceasefire issues in West Homewood. We know that Counselor Wolverton and Counselor Alman have been dealing with quite a bit. So has Berkeley and the Streets Department. We're getting a meeting either the end of this week or beginning of next week. I was on the phone today with the Vice President of Construction for Ceasefire out of Jackson, Mississippi today, and then we're going to be contacting the line locator company, USIC, and the Birmingham Waterworks Board to try and get a meeting of everybody together to see if we can get all of these issues resolved ASAP. Because I know people are really tired of gauzers coming out of their front yards and everywhere else. So, we're going to do the best we can, but just know that, that the city is on it, and we'll be working with these companies to get this addressed as quickly as possible. And then lastly, thank you all for all that you guys have done for my family and I while Braxton has been at home dealing with the repercussions of his accident. Thank you for all the meals. They have been absolutely wonderful, and all of the prayers, we certainly feel them. But y'all have, y'all have been great, and we, we just, we really, really appreciate y'all. So, that's it.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Gualtney.
You know what?
I was instructed that finance is at five.
Doggone it. I was hoping to slide it in. I will set public safety for five-thirty, I guess.
Well, you'll set it for after finance.
Yeah.
But there, there may be a thought that it's going to take about thirty minutes for finance, but, but it'll, it'll start whenever finance ends.
We will set public safety following finance. Just two brief things. Counselor Harden, thank you for stepping in to fill the gap. Today was a bit of a mess, so I appreciate you doing the vouchers for finance. And also put on your calendars, May seventh, Saturday, as We Love Homewood Day, particularly the five K. Expect to see all of the runners and everybody that's going to train to run between now and then out to five K, so we can all get beat by Jennifer and Barry.
Yeah, I think I'm volunteering.
That's it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gier?
Yes, thank you. Tonight Arts Council met, and I was not able to attend because I was coming into town, and I'm, is that why you're here, Claudia? Okay, I know we have an open seat that has just been announced, and, and is it Melissa Way?
I'm, I'm, I don't, I believe it is Melissa.
Okay, and do we know what, just, just for, well, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just want to make sure I understand what we're doing.
Well, I don't, I just saw Claudia sitting through the meeting, and I thought maybe she needed to announce something real quick or make a comment.
Actually, I do. My name is Claudia Pearson, and I am a member of the Arts Council. Brian was not there tonight, and so I was just sort of delegated to come, and we're not sure how to proceed with this, but as you just mentioned, We Love Homewood Day is coming up fairly quickly, and the Arts Council is planning to produce a coloring book to hand out, to have dancers in a tent at the We Love Homewood Day. But we do not have any authorization for funds at this point, and because it is on sort of an expedited schedule to hire an artist for the coloring book and to pay the dancers, I'm not sure how we should go through that, but I just wanted the board to know that we are looking.
Okay, you, okay. I thought, I thought maybe there was something else that came up. You have a budget, and you and I can talk.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that.
Everything's great. I'll call you after.
Okay, okay. No, we did, we talked, we discussed the fact that we, we are missing a member, and we do need to open that up for people to apply, and I'm not sure which district they're in.
Okay, we'll find out and announce, make that announcement next week.
Yeah, we just, we just wanted to make sure it was okay for us to hire an artist, and that they would get paid, so.
Absolutely.
Should I let you know how much we're looking at?
Well, Brian.
Later?
No, yes, Brian, Brian understands.
Okay, thank you very much. That was the main reason, because we're on a short schedule with getting the artists lined up and everything done. I didn't want to go and commit to something and then not have it approved, so I would just, in a caution.
So, yeah, you can just talk to, you can talk to Ms. Gier or Ms. Salter about it.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. That's all. Thanks a lot.
Thanks. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everybody in the neighborhood that's had patients and issues with ceasefire. I know that we are headed in the right direction with that, and so I know it's a headache, and hopefully we will be able to clear things up adequately so as they kind of expand, the process is fixed for the rest of Homewood as well, as they continue to branch out. So thank you to the mayor and to Public Works for, for continuing to handle that on a daily basis as well. Also wanted to thank the Chamber for Taste of Homewood. I agree that it was, it was a great event to have outside. The weather was perfect. We, we kind of lucked up there as well. Vendors were great, and overall I thought it went extremely well, and we really enjoyed it. I am also looking forward to the Exceptional Foundation Basketball Game. We haven't played in, yeah, twenty nineteen. So, definitely looking forward to that, and you guys will, that haven't played before, we'll see why shortly. And then I just wanted to thank the Hawken PTO and everybody that was involved in putting together the color run that took place yesterday afternoon. It was a great event. Everything went off without a hitch, and I think everybody had a fantastic time, so that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Sims, whoops, sorry.
Actually, do I have anything new? Yes, the tree. There's a tree item. So we'll, we'll set Public Works after Public Safety.
Mr. Gualtney, you think, how long do you think it'll probably be for yours?
Actually, there's a, it looks like there's a commission wanting to write away or state farm market on your screen.
Yes, okay. I, I still think though fifteen minutes will probably do it though.
Okay, so it'll start after Public Safety, which estimate, estimated around five, four, five. Yeah. You, you don't need to. It's just after. And then we just go in order. Yep. All right, Mr. Smith, Mr. Sims, excuse me.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up to the reference earlier about the Beautification Board meeting today, and again, vacancies are in wards one, two, three. There's one available position for each ward. If y'all recall, we, we switched those to ward appointments back when we changed the resolution or ordinance relating to the, to the board a few months ago. So there's actually ward-specific position, so those are one, two, and three, we currently have one representative right now. But then wards five and four, we have four representatives from each ward, so that's occupying the two-five slots as well as two at-large slots for each of those. So, again, we really want to try to recruit more representatives from wards one, two, and three. So if y'all help me spread the word, that would be great, and also related to that, spreading the word about the creek cleanups that the Beautification Board is working on in April. I referenced that they're going to do one April ninth, and it's just a Saturday. It's going to be ten from noon. That's going to be in partnership with Friends of Shades Creek that they do the cleanup that day. But also, we have partnered, Ben Booth, the chair, has reached out to other organizational reps to coordinate cleanups on subsequent Saturdays. So we kind of do a whole month of cleanups each Saturday throughout the month. So, April second, Osprey International, who does the litter getter, is going to coordinate volunteers for a cleanup. April ninth is the Beautification Board and Friends of Shades Creek. April twenty-third, a scout troop is coordinating a cleanup. And April thirtieth is Cohaba Riverkeeper, who's going to facilitate volunteers for that one. So, we're just really trying to do a blitz throughout that month before the weeds get too, too thick around the creek and do some cleanups. Because as y'all know, I mean, obviously trash is, you know, from roadsides is one thing, but we also sometimes have storm events that result in a lot of trash coming down, and then you see plastic bags, you know, in the, in the, in the branches and so forth. So we just really want to beautify that area as much as possible along Griffin Creek and along Shades, because we really have some beautiful amenities and want to, you know, improve it as the best we can with a little sweat equity. So, thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
The Historic Preservation Commission met last Tuesday, and it is just a great group of people, and they have got lots of exciting ideas and plans coming up. We are going to be doing a, we haven't done a forum in a long time, which was one of the, the commission's goals. So we have set now a forum for April twenty-eighth, which is actually going to be at the Union Missionary Baptist Church in Rosedale. The commission has been working on a grant project there for Historic Structures Report for them, which has been completed, and now they're working toward coming up with some ideas for actual structural things that can be done to help the church fix some things that need to be fixed. So that's going to happen on the twenty-eighth, and I will have more information as it gets a little closer in terms of time and that sort of thing. I think they're still working on that. And then we're also going to have a booth at We Love Homewood Day during the festival, and we're going to be kicking off Historic Preservation Month, which is May. And I believe they're going to do the same kind of project they did last year, which is have people submit their houses where they have done historic renovations, and they'll get a sign in their front yard, and he'll, Jake will promote that on social media. So, that's coming up. And, yeah, Taste of Homewood was awesome, so much good food, and I was just so proud of Meredith and Shay and everybody at the Chamber for doing such a great job. And I will set Special Issues after Public Works, and I think I only have one item, so I'll be really fast.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Nelms?
I don't have any comments tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Andrus?
I do need to set P and D, so I'll go ahead and start with that. Also want to echo everyone else's comments about the Taste of Homewood. I didn't even make it over to the other side. So when I saw today who won, I did not make it to any of those because I filled up by the time I got to halfway across the plaza, and it was great being outside, and I really enjoyed it. And I just want to thank all the vendors for being there. We actually ended up going. I brought food to a ailing friend Friday night, and I went to Sorrel, which by the way, Melody, I, I told her I would tell you. Sorrel's my favorite caterer when we cater here at the, at the. Did you tell her that? She said, please tell Melody that. Yeah, it was wonderful. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it was great. I want to thank Berkeley for all the drama on Yorkshire with the curbs and the no curbs of the curbs, and the no curbs of the gutters, and the no gutters, and it's, it's been a mess over there, and I really thank him for listening to me, and, and Chris Thacker always. Check out the article in the BBJ about hot, hot, hot Homewood with quotes from myself and Counselor Harden all about just all the goings-on with the new restaurants and just all the business that's been going on in our area, which has just been crazy. And I also want to thank you guys for coming by the pancake breakfast at the Colonnus this, on Saturday. It was a very early morning. I know by halfway through the morning, we had sold four hundred pancakes, and we'd done like sixteen thousand dollars in sponsorships. So it was a successful morning, and it was bright and early, and my son was dressed up like a stick of butter on the corner of Oxmore in front of the. So, and by the way, twenty-five degree weather. So anyway, thanks to everybody. I'm glad that we got to feed the road soccer team. So that is all that I have.
All right, Mr. Harden?
I missed Taste of Homewood. My wife had concert tickets, and I chose to go to dinner with her, and she didn't like the fact I was going to try and do Taste of Homewood, then go to dinner, then go to concert. So, I missed it. I hate that. I, all, I did make that pancake breakfast. I might have been the last person there. At eleven-twenty, my wife said, I thought you were going to the pancake breakfast this morning. So I rushed over there and got my pancakes and sausage. But other than that, I just want to continue to always thank our, our employees who make our city run. Going through those bills, which is always a lot of work, you realize how many things we have going on and where we spend our money, and, and there's just always a lot going on in our city that, that, that the employees keep it running.
All right. I've just got a couple of things. First, even though he's not here tonight, I'm going to thank Dr. Jones for taking on the last meeting while I was out of town for business. Yeah, you know, it was just, it was just, you know, committees and council and a bunch of public hearings.
They went smoothly.
They were mostly inconsequential, so. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know that thanks are even necessary, but I will go ahead and thank him. Seriously, I appreciate him doing that since I had to be out of town. And secondly, while I was out of town, I was with another attorney whose stepson is at the Exceptional Foundation, and he happened to be asking me, actually, the night that y'all were meeting, we were at dinner together, and he, he asked me about the basketball game, and I said, oh, we're getting ready, you know, we're, we're. And so he, he talked to his stepson the next morning, actually, and when he came to the deposition, he said, so I talked to Merrill this morning and told him y'all got all kinds of secret plays that you're working up. So he built us up to be something, to be really good this year. So they, they now think we have secret plays going. Our, our secret is blown, and he said that Merrill was already worked up and, and that he was going in that day to work on counter-secret plays against us. So, so anyway, I, I have no doubt they'll be ready for us, but looking forward to that. It's one of my favorite events. So, with that, we will adjourn, and we will be back here on the twenty-eighth.